Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can everyone please rise for a pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence?
Pledge and sacrifice in the name of the states and the republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
I would have silence for our military and first responders who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Okay, we're going to start off tonight with public comment. The public comment is going to be on items that are on the agenda. Just wanted to make a couple of quick points on this. The Sunshine Act gives the public the right to comment on issues that are or may be before this board and that the board has jurisdiction on. So please keep that in mind when you're speaking. Also, per Roberts, all public comment is addressed to the chair and not individual council members, and addressing individual members is not allowed. With that being said, hold up the floor for public comment.
Good evening. First, I want to tell you that I'm really thankful that we finally got that drainage pipe cleared out. Now, if we ever get some rain, we can see if it actually works. The excavation and berm...
I'm sorry, yes, Don Arrest. I'm sorry, you're on the agenda. He was asking who you were, and I just said that you're Don Arrest. I'm sorry.
The excavation that was done and the creation of that berm caused the occlusion of that pipe. And because that land, as most of you are familiar, who are from New Freedom know, it originally was a very gradual slope down to the buildings below. After the building was finished, I contacted a local contractor regarding the feasibility of putting a privacy fence down at the end of my yard in front of those apartments. And upon checking the boundary lines, it was found that the curve in the ground was actually carved out of the end of my one-acre lot. The contractor spoke to a supervisor on site and explained the problem. That same supervisor offered a monetary settlement to just ignore it. The contractor explained that I desired to have a straight fence, not a curved, round fence. And so the supervisor agreed to restore the ground to the previous straight boundary configuration. The permit was granted, the fence was installed, flushed to the ground at my desire. The problem now is erosion. There are now several areas under the fence which my neighbor's cat and small animals are able to traverse back and forth underneath. My question is, if this erosion continues, what are you gonna do? I mean, eventually, if it continues eroding, my fence is gonna be hanging in midair. I mean, number one, this, I know this, you know, it was approved by EPA or whoever, but that always was wetlands, and so you're gonna have this erosion.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to at least take the time to have the borough engineer look into it and see what can or should be done.
Because I think what's happening is, yes, they put the ground back up, but, I mean, after 100 or 200 years, you disturb that ground, you put it back, it's not necessarily gonna stay where you put it.
So has it been eroding even without the rain? Because it almost has, or was this over a long period?
Well, it's not something that happens every day. It's been happening since the pipe didn't drain. We had all that water backing up in the yard, so of course, that can wash some other way. But I don't know, maybe it'll stop where it is. But I'm just concerned if it doesn't, fencing is an expensive proposition, and you know, I can't have it hanging in midair if it keeps eroding. And so anyway, there's one other subject I'd just like to bring up. Several months ago, you proposed kindness week here in New Freedom, and I think that's a good idea. One can only hope that that kindness will extend throughout the year and not just for a week. And I would like to suggest that maybe you could start right here in this room. I do really not think that many of you would want your mothers, your daughters, your wife to be treated with the disrespect that is shown to the only woman on this council. And I don't think that's a very good example when you're gonna ask people in the community to show kindness. So I'm hoping that this will change. Thank you.
Thank you.
When she had...
But is that an outbreak?
In August '22, when she came, when both of them were here, Ms. Hedy and Ms. Russell were here, they had mentioned what was happening to the property and that you stated that you would get that back hold. I think this was also then. I know, I think there might be some concern that we have to wait till spring, till everything else is completed, and what's gonna happen between now and...
Yeah, my concern is, I mean, obviously, I'm sure even before us, that the erosion ran, or the water ran in that direction. That's the low point, and that's where the water collected. Probably what happened was with the earth being disturbed, I imagine that there was some erosion. Now, it's gonna come, it's gonna level out at some point. I think we have to, I think we at least have to look at it, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
From my perspective, oftentimes, when public improvements are installed, there's a maintenance bond that follows the work, and the contractor warrants that work. So if you're still within that maintenance bond period, for example, if you send the engineer out, the engineer can produce a report that would then be submitted to the contractor, and then if the contractor doesn't make the changes that are required and it's still within that period, you might be able to draw on the maintenance bond and have it, have the work done if there's a deficiency in the construction. So that's why I suggested that the engineer take a look at it and see, that's the word, at the council discretion, but that was why I suggested.
I think that's the next step. I mean, we're gonna have to at least take a look at it.
But to clarify, the fence was installed after '22. The fence was installed recently in that area.
Well, the other problem was, when they dropped down, excavated deep, and then when they finished, they built up a berm, which was a little bit higher than the regular ground. So like the contractor said to me, that's also funneling, was also funneling the water down into the yard. But they did, when they put the dirt back, they did level out the berm on part of it, but not all of it. The other problem is, now it's been declared wetlands, and supposedly, nobody can do anything to it. I mean, I would, I could fill in, have my landscape of fill in the dirt from my side, but that won't solve the problem. I mean, I'd be amenable to even if they piled rocks back there or something, so that it just wouldn't keep washing under the fence.
Why don't we, we'll have them take a look and come up with the recommendation, one way or another, so.
All right.
Give us until next meeting. All right, thank you. Terry?
Good evening. We really are here for a follow-up. We were here in Hoggip, July, discussing 28 McCurley. Want to see what you have found, or that you know what we have found, what we have done, trying to find. So what was, what was the...
Want to give us an update?
Yeah, so we, obviously, we posted the property, we sent to the last known address, which was the property, to see if we could obtain a boarding address, which we have not been able to do so in the past. We did receive an address in Maryland that was returned as well. So just last week, we did receive two additional addresses for New York, and we sent both of those certified in regular mail. So we need to determine now if they're signed for and if we get any kind of address certification back. So that's the next step. Obviously, the goal here is we have to provide notice before we can do it.
So in the interim, when we were, when we left here, we did, we did do what was suggested us to go, our homeowners, so we had a homeowners' meeting, which resulted in what we thought that it would be beyond the expense and really the realm of our homeowners, because the violent, more violations are done through the borough than they are through homeowners. Then we made phone calls, we tried to go the social media route, we went to friends that had never people had seen her in 10, 15 years, so there really just wasn't any movement on that. But there's been a new development.
Yeah, yesterday, actually, we managed to find her sister through public records, reached out to her, she's in New York State, and she, she, she in turn contacted her sister, the owner of the property, who then called us today. So we now have her phone number, and we do not have an address. She gave us a post office box in New York State, which is probably one of the two addresses you have, because she acknowledged that she had just received the notice from the borough today. I don't know when it was mailed, but she just got it. She did indicate, and I assume that is strictly about the car. Is there more to it than that? I don't know, but the borough sent.
There were multiple letters.
Okay, so it's not just about...
It's not just a vehicle.
Not just about the vehicle and property?
Correct.
Okay. So in any event, she did say in that phone call today that she was, she was going to contact, like, Cars for Kids or some such operation to get the car off the property. We suggested we could give her a list of names and phone numbers of people that could do work at the property to paint the, you know, the eaves and the, clean up the brush, et cetera. And she indicated a willingness to do some of those things, but to wait and see what really happens. And that's pretty much what we know at this point.
So...
Did she mention where the sister is, or...
She didn't, she's in New York, and I think we've got the address we got, and we got...
It's in Ver Plank, New York.
So you have, you have a post office box in Ver Plank, that's the address that she's getting mailed. She wouldn't give us an address where she's actually reside, I don't know what the story is there, but at least we have contact. We also have an email and a phone number.
We sent an actual registered letter to appeal by, which is have to go to the receiver she was, she was signed for.
So, you know, we, fortunately, we were, you were able to find all that, so we certainly have been working on this end as well. We saw after the last meeting that those, whatever on the, on the doors were put up pretty quickly, as they fell down and remained on the ground and what have you. But we just want to make sure that we're continuing this, this is not over for us. We want the car moved, we want, you know, the house cleaned up. I mean, it's just, it's, it's...
Yeah, I mean, the biggest concern I have really is not just the exterior of the property, what's going on on the inside? I mean, when you leave a house abandoned for...
10 years plus, right?
You don't know what's inside.
Right, it's just, so we, so we are continuing on our side, so we're just asking to be continued on your side as well. So that was an update from, you know, working for three months. What timeframe are we talking of what, you know, do you inform us when they, she's, you know, she's gotten in contact with her, what goes through her?
Well, the best thing we can do is, if possible, is to get the owner's address. That's, that's who you have to send to.
Does anyone ever make phone calls?
We do if we have numbers for, there's been code enforcement issues where if we have phone numbers, we're able to make that call. There was, we had no phone number recorded in our billing software. I know I did try to...
So how did you, you said last week you sent, you found the New York number. How did you find that?
That was through our solicitor. They have separate program that they were able to utilize to track that down. It took some time.
It took three months, really?
Well, we had to go through the process to post, and we had the other address, and you have to wait for 15 days. Everything snowballs.
Okay, okay.
And is this a new solicitor? I think last time we were here, it was a different solicitor.
No, I'll say firm, just because you moved the meeting date. Dave has a conflict with two meetings, so you got your second straight.
That's okay, right?
Yes, we're, we're welcome, welcome here, up here. I do have a question, though, regarding, like, notice. If she refuses to, you know, she can have possession of this, she, you know, acknowledged she has possession of this for our letters today to us on the phone, but if she doesn't return receipt, there's no...
Not necessarily. So we send one certified, one first class. If they both come back, clearly, there's an issue. If the certified comes back as undeliverable, because their signature will know that, but if the first class doesn't come back, that's deemed delivered by the magistrate. So she can, she can not sign for the certified, but the other one is still deemed delivered. As long as it doesn't come back, which it sounds like it won't.
Right.
Oh, yeah, she has it in hand.
Because I was curious, even if, you know, with all those undeliverable situations you had, isn't there a constructive notice just on posting on the door? I don't know what all the Pennsylvania laws are.
Well, the International Property Maintenance Code does indicate that is an acceptable method, can post the violation on, or the violation notice on the violation, in this case, would be the property. But because we knew that it was vacant, there was no one visiting, we still wanted to have some kind of personal notification done. So that was, we were trying to cover both aspects.
So I guess, are you kind of asking, would you...
What I'm worried is if there was no response at this point, you could still take action, I assume.
So now we know that you've done the first class, you've done the registered, we wait some time, okay, then we wait some time, then what? I mean, that's what he's saying, is how long would you post something? Now can we post something on the door? I mean...
They didn't post it.
They have posted. I guess the real question I have is if she doesn't respond, what are your, what's your ability to...
You really want to know, when can we go in the house and see what's going on? And I think that's, that's probably not gonna happen unless we can find the owner, you know, have the...
So somebody needs to let you in, is what you're saying?
Not, not, not for, the exterior violations, if it's not complied with, within the timeframe along with the letters that were sent last week, that not begins the process with us filing complaints at the magistrate. Keep in mind, that's not going to fix the violation, that's going to assess fines and penalties. So the violation can still exist, even if the magistrate fines her guilty.
True, true. But it comes to a point when there's unpaid bills and unpaid penalties, you can take other action at that point.
Correct, there's sheriff's sale items, and there's, there's other options, but we have to go through that process first, yeah.
Your process, actually, where you're dealing with her, and if you can get her names of contractors, and if she's willing to work with you, it's a lot quicker than our process.
Yeah, we're hopeful that it's, you know, successful. It's kind of unclear with the society, what the story is.
So do you have any type of timeframe for your process?
Yeah, the, the letters that go out, allocated timeframe on there. I believe they were 30 days from the data mailing. I don't want to say for sure, but that would be the longest extended time for these type violations.
Oh, we've made some leeway?
Yeah.
Right, should we schedule again in a number of months, and will you contact us with an update?
I can, I can reach out, I can contact.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, Devin Taylor, general comment on proposed minutes for approval.
Who's sorry for the...
General comment on the proposed minutes. Good evening. Following the events of last month, I felt it necessary to once again return to this table and do what I can as a citizen of this great nation to be actively involved in its democratic processes. For it is the duty and responsibility of all Americans to be involved in those processes. We the people are responsible for the preservation of our rights and the rights of others. Hope the four of you who violated my rights last month will not infringe upon them or the rights of others again, as we work towards peaceful resolutions of the people's business. Through elections and the people's voice, you mere men and women have found yourself on that side of the table. It is through our good graces and the graces of God alone that you remain in the positions you have been elected. For months, many on this council have been in support of the public comment policy that would restrict the rights to people even further. Members of this council have already proven bias and censorship concerns with selective inclusion of public comment in minutes since April 2024. I am claiming a grief status now, as members of this council have actively worked to censor me for months, as my notes, comments, documents, and contributions have willfully been omitted by this council. Many will not silence a few. President Bobby will even go so far as to accuse his fellow public servants of planting residents in the audience to derail business or individuals. President will allow his girlfriend, Joni Mason, and other allies to speak out of turn, out of order, or straight up openly agree with her non-German remarks. Tonight, I am submitting to this agency a copy of the complaints, the ethics complaints and criminal complaints that I, Devin Taylor, New Freedom resident filed against Borough Council President Andrew Bobby, Councilman David Reisdorf. These are documents that residents of New Freedom should be made aware of, and I wish for them to be included in the minutes. While some of you may disagree with the content of the material, it does not give you the right to censor me or public information. This council has failed to conduct business in accordance with the Robert rules of order and the Sunshine Act time and time again. And for one who has been, and for anyone who has been less than heard in these chambers, I encourage you to file your grievances. You have a voice, and together, we can make the changes we want to see. Thankfully, for those of you on this council who continue to violate the rights to people, the burden of enforcement is primarily on the people. I have attempted to have the violations that others and I have identified and witness remedy in-house as much as possible. However, some of you have made that extremely difficult by thinking we, the people, aren't allowed to do so. Therefore, prior suggestion, Mr. President, I file a complaint with the district court, and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have a resolution to the issues that you and other members of this council have created. As Thomas Jefferson once said, "I have sworn upon the altar of God eternal hostility against every form of tyranny over the mind of man." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jenny Newbauer, for your South Constitution.
Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
This is copy.
That's all yours.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, I'm submitting to this agency a copy of the complaints filed against both of those individuals. Thank you for your time.
My questions were for Andrew in regards to the Lions Club. I got a call from Bob Warner at the Lions right before I got here. They are prepared to purchase the bench for Tom Summers. They got declined from Royal Trail to put a bench in. I thought we had settled on putting something at the park. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So I don't, okay, so long story short, am I correct that if they contact you, they have the bench they want to purchase, we can get that installed then, correct?
Yeah, I think that is the plan.
That was the, that's what I thought, but I, okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Margaret Dillis, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm here on behalf of our Gilice Annual New Freedom Christmas Parade. And as of today, we are only 19 short days away. Yes. And the excitement is building, people are ready, and we are very thankful for all of our supporters. It's crunch time, as we call it, for me and my husband, because it's tying all this together, and we're getting calls from all over. We got a call from people in New Jersey who want to bring down some buses to see this thing. So the excitement is there. We still do need volunteers, if anybody's willing to help us on Friday night at the community center, to decorate, set up, that kind of thing. Also, on Saturday morning, for the pancakes with Santa, which begins at 9 o'clock. And if you or any of your neighbors live along the parade route, which is South Schaefer to Broad, back here to the borough, we walked it yesterday, part of it, handing out flyers and things, asking them to light it up. So if you would help us, if you know your neighbors, ask them to light up our parade route.
You can put that on savvy citizen, right? That would work.
Okay, thank you. And if anybody else has anything for us, everybody knows how to reach us, knock on our door, call, anything like that. We think, again, like all of our supporters, who are always there for us. And this thing is, it seems like every year, it gets better and better. And that's what we want, because it's all for the people of New, well, I shouldn't say New Freedom now, because people are coming from all over. We hear from Southern York County, I mean, it's just amazing. And we thank you guys, and everybody that's in the room for your support, just come out and help us have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. John Woods is out of town. We changed the date on him, so he won't be here tonight. And next up is approval of minutes from the regular meeting held October 21st. We'll take them one at a time, and the budget meeting held November 4th. So the first meeting, October 21st. I didn't entertain a motion.
I submit to approve council meeting from October 21st, 2024.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections?
I had asked, I spoke to Dave about it in a statement regarding resignation, before the word resignation should be his, it's ambiguous of what is being talked about. So David Reisdorf's statement regarding his resignation, David agreed.
Yeah, no problem. And the motion to include his? Anything else? Hall of favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Approval of the minutes for the budget meeting of November 4th. We didn't entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve council budget meeting from November 4th, 2024.
Any discussion on that?
Draft, draft 2025 budget review, it says October 7th, 20024. 2024. Neither of us will make it that long. Ain't gonna happen.
All in favor with that modification?
Yeah, I'll amend with the motion to change 220024 to 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. My vote is aye. Along with the approval of the budget meeting, the, there is a public notice to advertise the budget. All right, then approval of the treasures report pending audit of October 2024.
Make a motion to approve the treasures report from October 24, 2024, pending audit.
I'll second.
The motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Stormwater channel or constitution that we've already?
There's no update again. It'll be in the spring until they're able to finish that little bit of seeding and come back and touch anything up.
Fiscal occasion lease renewal?
Yeah, following the last council meeting, there were some changes made to the lease, made those changes and sent to the tenant. Just verbally has agreed to those changes and is expecting to sign and re-admit the lease sometime this week.
So what I'm hearing is we have a complete and agreed to lease pretty much, just needed Legal analysis, code of ordinances?
No update there. We're waiting for general code to come back with the changes that were incorporated following council's review, just to get that new document before we send out the notification, the public notification.
Consider authorizing advertisement. It's the public notice. It's notices hereby given that the proposed 2025 budget for the borough of New Freedom is available for inspection today's date until December 9th. And let me read the whole thing. Borough council would consider passage of the 2025 budget, a tax levy resolution imposing a 2.3 mil general tax, real estate tax, a 2.28 mil fire tax, and a .2 mil EMS tax for the fiscal year of 2025 at the Borough Council meeting on Monday, December 9th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Borough Office located at 49 East High Street, New Freedom, PA. The budget and copies of the proposed tax resolution are available for renew, review and inspection at the Borough Office Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM to 4:00 PM. That's no tax increase for this year. It's the same as we had last year. I would entertain a motion?
Agreed.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of the change order number one, reducing the contract price by $22,666 for the 2024 street improvement project. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, just crossed that. I apologize. The next item actually on the written agenda is consider approval of the resolution adopting the York County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The commissioners did not meet this month, so we have to wait until next month to have something back from them. So I crasped it on mine and forgot to say that to you, but apologize for that. Now we're on the change order number one. Entertain a motion?
So moved. I was happy to approve the change.
Doesn't happen too often.
I'll second.
Every motion is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of accepting the reduction?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of payment application number one, which is a final from Stewart and Tate in the amount of $171,407.25 for the 2024 street improvement project.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Talk about this?
Yes.
Am I missing something? It's, oh, I did, I am missing something. I'm sorry. Next up is consider approval of the playground equipment purchase for John Davis Community Park. It's from General Recreation Incorporated. The grand total is $66,555, and I believe half of that is covered by grants.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand is covered by grants, so just over half. I would entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where's that gonna be placed? Because I know we were looking at that for the pickleball court.
Well, it won't take away the, it won't take away the.
So that's basically for locals, because there is no parking. My question is, is there any parking?
Yeah, it's, it's not very plentiful.
Well, very little, because garages and driveways, they have, that was a problem that we had.
Possibly looking at a separate project in these parts of that area, but yes, it's more.
So they'll make sure that kind of down the road, we might be able to put parking in, they won't put the equipment right up to the road?
No.
I mean, that's a pretty big lot. They could move it back.
Right, right.
But that big buffer, if we could.
Sure. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
We have about to unfinished business.
Sure.
Something with their lease, they're gonna sign that, but that won't be active until January 1st. Council had told them months ago to remove the propane tanks because of how volatile that is. They did, and then they returned them the following month. The council should send them immediate notice to remove them immediately, not waiting until January.
I concur.
You asked? You asked? Is there a violation of their current lease? Actually, they're violating, well, that's not their current lease, right? Is it a violation being the council has directed for it to be, them to be removed?
Is it a zoning infringement?
I mean, I would say no, because your residential house could put propane tanks out on the patio or something, that wouldn't that be any different? But this is the case where there's traffic.
Right, that's the big difference. Somebody backs into one of those tanks.
And I think, I mean, we could, yeah, we could send them a registered letter or more. Give them a drop dead date.
I do not have anything from Dave tonight. I don't have anything myself, so no report. To my knowledge, Dave will be back next month, because you'll be returning to your normal meeting day for second day tomorrow.
Managers Report?
Everybody has a copy of the October 2024 report as well as the grant status updates. Didn't really have any grant status update changes in the month of November, and if there's any questions on the report, answer those.
And you have any questions?
Was there any detail with the York County Economic Alliance and Trail Towns as to what might be a project in the making or suggestions?
They're just looking at different properties and different opportunities at this point. We talked about a couple of different properties around town that might open up and could be utilized as incubators or, as we talked about, the kind of rotating art displays or something. The Economic Alliance would take care of that. That would be a borough project.
Any more information on Franklin Square, the commercial space in the second building? How close does that have to be to the rail trail for them to consider building?
Yeah, we need to be incredibly close because of the amount of the traffic.
Yeah, okay.
When the New Freedom signs were taken down, it feels like over a year ago. I don't know exactly when it was. It was noted that the community signs, the lions, those badges and so forth, were going to be put back up on a post. That doesn't happen.
We were waiting for new signs. We did discuss that with Rotary, and I believe they had another sign that they put at the park off of Orwig. But I believe, I'll have to check with those organizations. I think we basically said we could put another post in the ground and still have their signs up. I think at the time, we were waiting on information from those organizations that they wanted us to, that they had a sign that wanted to change, a sign to have something updated and clean to match. And I believed, that's correct, I believed the only one was the Rotary that had reached out and indicated they'd be getting a new signage. I'll follow up with them.
Where do the signs go that were taken down?
Most of them were beyond really wanting to put back up, just because of their condition.
And the actual signs will return to the clubs and organizations. They were here and they picked them up.
Yeah, there was any that weren't, they were.
There's a Lions meeting tomorrow night. Would you like me to bring it up at the meeting?
Sure. Do you have it? As you're looking through the report and the next, it's gonna be a lengthy process, but you're going to see complete streets noted in the manager's report and some other documents that are coming from the borough. So I realize that might not be a term that everyone's familiar with, so just have a quick video here that York County Planning Commission put together to go over what defines a complete street and what the process looks like. So again, it's just a quick three-minute video.
I'd like to watch it, because I would just.
I'd like to watch it.
This meeting's already long enough, we don't need to watch it, will we?
It's a series, it's only 36 minutes.
Dude? What the hell is that?
It isn't.
First two of them, the new one's just a series. So there we go.
In this video, we'll be discussing the concept of complete streets.
Let's try this one more time, so. Mayor, you and I had the same problem.
Mine was I couldn't connect to the.
Yeah, I just did it earlier and the sound played through, so, just so everybody can hear it.
In this video, we'll be discussing the concept of complete streets and the role of the York County Planning Commission, YCPC, in promoting this approach. Communities and the needs of people within them are constantly evolving. As these needs change, transportation systems must adapt accordingly. Today, transportation demand includes not only cars and trucks, but also people who bike, walk, roll, and use public transportation. These forms of travel have long been essential, and now, increasing demand in many communities requires a new direction in roadway design. But what if we had a model that better served all these people? Complete Streets is a design approach that not only improves conditions for vehicle users, but also creates safe spaces that encourage people to use various travel options. This approach provides designs that work for everyone, regardless of age, ability, or mode of transportation. Safety and community collaboration are key principles of this approach. Complete Streets is not a one-size-fits-all solution. Instead, it recognizes the unique needs of each community to best meet them. This includes a range of improvements, such as designated areas for pedestrians of all abilities to cross streets safely, dedicated spaces for cars, bicycles, and public transit to move efficiently, and bicycle and scooter parking that keeps sidewalks clear. Additionally, it creates opportunities for people to connect with neighbors as they walk or roll through their communities. The York County Planning Commission, YCPC, plays a critical role as a facilitator of complete streets, helping municipalities by providing frameworks and guidelines to support this new approach. YCPC's goal is to create safer, more sustainable, and more inclusive spaces for all community members. Components of complete streets. Pedestrian crossings. Designated ADA compliant crossings ensure safety and accessibility for all pedestrians, regardless of mobility level. Bicycle and scooter lanes. Dedicated lanes keep cyclists safe and keep sidewalks clear for pedestrians. Public transit spaces. Separate lanes for buses and other mass transit allow for efficient and smooth public transportation. Parking solutions. Bicycle and scooter parking areas help keep sidewalks clear, creating a more accessible environment. Community spaces. Spaces along streets encourage social connections, allowing people to interact with neighbors and feel more connected to their community. Complete Streets is here to meet the changing needs of our communities. It's an approach that benefits everyone, and YCPC is committed to leading the way towards safer, more accessible streets for all.
So hopefully that helped answer some of the questions on that terminology, but basically, it's just looking at any, any projects within the borough where we're addressing any kind of pedestrian bicyclist traffic movement, as well as looking at any new developments or any rehabs of certain properties that we're thinking about it from that holistic approach of making sure that it's a safe route for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and looking at a guideline that even new developments would have to comply with those set of regulations. So again, as we work through that process with the Planning Commission, everything will come back to this council for their review and approval, but it's pretty much a step in the right direction in utilizing the Heritage Rail Trail as a corridor to move people through the borough. Obviously, that helps the businesses and people feel safe when they're moving along those corridors.
Might be way premature, but I mean, obviously, you couldn't really put a bike lane on most of our streets, because we just don't have the space for a bike lane.
Yeah, there's different ways around that, but you're, you're making those improvements as you go through the projects, so.
We still kind of have a problem at Main and Franklin as you're crossing the railroad tracks. That's still crusher run.
We were right outside the limitations of the PUC, but now because we want over the tracks, we have to have HOP and PUC approval.
Okay, because I saw somebody the other week, and they were pushing, had to push a wheelchair out in the road, and somebody was flying down Main Street. Do you think they've slowed down? No, they laid on their horn to the poor person in the wheelchair.
Now, those, the ramps at Main Street specifically will not be fully compliant, but we went through the process with PNC to document that it's technically impedeable, but we do the best to meet the requirement.
I was gonna say, I go to other places and they don't have any problem. They put, like, asphalt right up to the railroad, over the middle of the railroad tracks, on the other side. They don't have stone, which was a number-one complaint of our residents in trying to hit a wheelchair through stones. So, it'll be taken care of.
Yeah.
You promise?
I do. I do.
All right.
Andrew, seeing as still your report, I have a question for you. The information Mr. Taylor gave you, will you get copied to that?
Yeah, yeah, I think...
There's only one minute, too.
I was gonna kind of take a look at it and vet it before it was distributed so that it looks like we could make some recommendations to the council. Is that okay?
Yep.
Does that become a matter of public record?
Sure.
It may or may not, depending on the nature of the complaint.
Any addresses or...
Yeah, well, that, and they said that there was a criminal complaint, so if there's a criminal investigation, that's not a public record, so I just have, I have to figure out what exactly, if anything, is going on here.
Can you do that in five minutes?
Well, we're not gonna do it in a public session. I can tell you that.
I don't really have anything, but, yeah, I don't come up with anything.
Mr. Mayor?
I really don't have anything. My nominations for the new, oh, nominations for the new officers took place at the fire company meeting last Thursday. They'll be voting on it at the next meeting. I'm sure they'll be asking me to swear in the new officers, the new line, and the, we're getting more and more volunteers all the time for the fireside especially. And the chase trucks working out phenomenally. The chase truck is working out phenomenally with having a paramedic on there. They're still having some equipment problems now and then with, you know, the ambulances, the maintenance. They're driven hard. I mean, I don't have a copy of the number of EMS calls that went out last month. Well, I do, but it's a lot. It's a lot. It's more and more all the time. Shrewsbury Township, we had three today, I think, for Baltimore County, and Shrewsbury Township, Cudores. They're just working their tails off, and I appreciate everything that they're doing.
I'm gonna go back for a second to the president's report. This isn't really a president's report, but I had, trying to figure out a way to shoo more than at least the fact that it's happening, and also to request that we add the library and York County Library Systems to the next agenda. I've copied everyone on council with a kind of summary article on what's going on with York County Library and the public. It's on Facebook, on multiple sites, so you can feel free to look on Facebook, on the different community sites. Everybody pretty much knows what they are, and then we'll discuss that at our next meeting. Have we already made our donation to the library for this year? Oh, for this year, for twenty-four? For 2024? We have.
I believe so.
That's a shame. I mean, it's, um... Well, it's not for the best year, yeah. Obviously, they use the money in twenty-four, so it's not a bad thing. Want to be careful next year that we don't do that too soon. And we'll have to talk about that at the next meeting. Good. Erica, the police report?
Ten of the November sixth meeting, Truist Bank, Campbell, and the Trail had ATM theft. They sold a truck and trailer from Shrewsbury with a little bobcat backhoe on it. Probably still box truck from behind miles before that, and so they are in the middle of figuring all that out now. In New Freedom, a house on Meadow Street had a bullet go through the home, possibly from somebody deer hunting. They're investigating that. Charger was sold that chief used to use, so that is gone. There was discussion on purchasing two license, or actually, three license plate readers. That'll come from the capital budget. There's been a line item there with ten thousand for many years, and it's just sat there, and the chief has done a lot of research, so the commission asked him to move forward and bring back information on that. Trick or Treat was great. It was one of the best ones that was reported. Officer Castillo will be sworn in at the next meeting. In Shrewsbury on Crass Road, there were three loose goats. They were able to be wrangled at a home. When the officers came and got the police trailer, they were able to get those goats back home, and those owners of them kindly gave a hundred-dollar donation to the department for their efforts. There was talk of creating the Civil Service Commission again for promotions and other related issues, so we gotta move forward. And there was discussion about the commission reaching out to surrounding municipalities for possible membership or contracts for ours, so that was about it.
Thank you. Can I get council's permission to talk to perhaps Donna Benton and Adam Blazer about taking the position on the, Adam was actually on the Civil Service Commission. They haven't really used the Civil Service Commission, so I don't think they ever had a meeting. But I, we'd like to talk to Donna and Adam.
Yeah, I'll talk to you when I see her.
You can do that. No? That's fine. Sir?
Yeah, just some information. So, on Meadow Street, that's my street.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. As additional information on that gunshot in Meadow Street. So, is my neighbor caddie quarter to you. Apparently, it was a handicapped lady that was hunting on the farmer's field or something and pointed a gun towards the houses and took a shot. It went into the house and threw a shower into the house and shattered tile, did all kinds of damage to the shower, shattered the door. So, luckily, nobody was in there. But I actually did hear the shot, and I didn't hear any screaming or anything, and so I thought, well, maybe it's the farmer, coyote or something. Didn't really trigger me to call the police because I didn't hear anything else in addition. But it was at nine twenty-three in the morning. I looked at my watch when I was outside, just in case it was bolted to something, but luckily, nobody was hurt. That particular house, just coincidentally, has some issues going on with the farmer. So, there's a little bit of backstory.
That happened several years ago out on Smith Mill.
Yeah.
Somebody was hunting back in the woods of the farm and shot through one of the houses at Smith Mill.
I didn't even know that there was hunting permitted in that part of the woods, which I think is nutty because there's so many homes directly in the path of the bullet that I was shocked that it was even allowed there.
Well, it's Maryland, right?
Not that part. It's PA, but it's a sliver of woods. You could walk through it in less than ten minutes. It's small, you know? You'd ride through it all the time, and that's my concern with all the, if you take the back way to Maryland there, exit thirty-six, exit there, you're driving right through that area, so if there's errands going around, it could be a problem. Luckily, nobody was hurt, but had shattered the shower, so.
Got a question about the SRO. You had mentioned that you have some information for the, that we make the announcement?
You did not.
I, yeah, I don't...
It's just that he stepped down?
He's been replaced. Sergeant Schmuck is...
My son, my son did say that. He said for a while, there were several officers filling in, but I think they had announced that.
Okay, I did want to point out one thing, too. They, there was some discussion about the rising police costs, of course, because, you know, we're all being impacted by that. And they came, the latest report shows that SRPD is twenty percent lower than any other PPU rate. What is in the state, I think? It was in the whole state, so... Well, it's good to know because you're getting, you're getting quality service at a reasonable cost. I mean, you might not like the reasonable cost, but it is a reasonable cost for what we're getting. I'd like to, I would like to command the police department on that. Sounds good.
Hey, one question. Erica, is how difficult would it be to find out what the public services assist person inquiries were? It just, there's, you know, New Freedom had sixteen, and Shrewsbury and Stewartstown each had four, so what, how difficult is it to find out the nature of the inquiries? I mean, how come why did New Freedom have so many of these? Is there an easy way to find out? I guess what I'm asking is an easy way to find out the nature of...
So, public assist?
Yeah. Just public services, assist person, sixteen.
I think they're driving down the road. Somebody asks for directions. Somebody says, I see this over here.
Could be someone had a flat tire.
It's...
Stop to help. But, yeah, we could...
It looked that because Shrewsbury had four, Stewartstown had four, New Freedom had sixteen.
Engineers report for October. Really doing on the community center. What's the line item? Con warehouse, number eight.
There was no, I think that was probably leftover from when the...
Questions on Arrow, which is the next engineering section? Water system? The wastewater report? Hopefully permit fees? Code enforcement?
What happened with the fire? One-two-thirty-five, not second?
It was a small outbreak.
It was, I, there are documentation. I saw documentation reporting circumstances. Is that, oh, the court case this week?
Not for this case because it's not what we're filing against.
Is it only the outside of the house?
Correct.
Does it need to be filed inside?
We would have to have administrative search warrant to file a citation inside.
Wouldn't there be a fire report? Yes. Should be a reporter, right? Yes, it was reported that it was, um, what do you call it?
Hoarding.
Hoarding, hoarding conditions in the entire lower level. They couldn't even get to the wall. Came through as a wall fire. Was it a wall fire? Or was it because of the... I don't, I think it was a minor electrical outlet fire that... That's what I had heard, but I just didn't... But I know they were, the department was inside the building. They reported hoarding conditions. Did you take any pictures? Doubt it.
What day is the court date this week?
It was scheduled for Wednesday at four-thirty. Today, I received a continuance notice from the magistrate because of the death in the family.
With no date, just a twenty minutes?
Just that I would receive additional notification.
You'll keep us up to date on that, those court cases? Subdivision and land development report? Can I back up a little? Back to the code enforcement. Very last one. No progress. Quality violation issued. How far do we have to go on a house that's been unoccupied for seven years? How long do the rest of the neighbors have to put up with that, something like that? You're talking about the one above them? The very last one. Picture fourteen. There are a lot of other pictures, but... It's actually thirteen, I think, is what you're talking about? Oh, it says picture number fourteen. Picture number fourteen. Okay, sorry. It is affecting property values. The person died seven years ago. I don't even know if the estate's been settled, but there's been absolutely nothing done to that other than a garage rebuilt because it was falling down, and the rest of that house is about to fall down. The eaves in the back are loose and falling. The paint windows are out. I would just like to see us, you know, do something with that.
I would just like to see us, you know, do something with that. It's the same, it's not as big, it's worse than McCurly, let me tell you. So, I would like to see something done there.
So, next step?
If we sent a violation letter, why do we send a quality of life violation later? Wouldn't we send the quality of life violation first? And send a violation letter when nothing's been done? Or does it matter?
It was an effort to try to. Move Gartner more, more, yeah, attention.
Well, certainly hope we continue. How often can you issue a quality of life? Once a month?
I would need to check, um, they would have, you'd have to, at least wait. The period of time that wait can pass.
Because it adds up once you hit two and three.
So, with the other property?
Right. Well, that one, you can't find the owner. This one, we know who the owner is.
Subdivision and land development report.
Just to point out regarding Saint John Baptist Catholic Church, we did receive a time extension letter on October thirty. They've decided to change directions a little bit, and so they're going to go through the NPDS permanent process. Because the disturbance would be greater than one acre, so. They're trying not to have to go that direction, but to address some of the stormwater concerns on the property, don't need to do that.
Recreation?
All right, my notes here. Uh, we finalized the background checks. Those background checks coincide with what the school district does. So this way, if you already have your background checks with the school, you can then use them with recreation. If you have them with recreation and decide to volunteer, field trip, whatever, at schools, you can use them, so they're backwards compatible. Trying to make it easy on everybody. Want to say thank you to Andrew. Our nonprofit status for recreation came in. I guess basically two months ahead of time from what we had originally thought. There's another group in the community that's been trying for longer and harder, and they're going to get there, but they're first, so thank you for that. That'll make it easier for soliciting donations for events and everything else. As far as new business, there is some interest in having maybe a cornhole league. I do need to get ahold of a contact information for somebody, see if they would be interested in essentially running it, similar to what we do with pickleball. And Gina has gotten a speaker series going up, and she said she has the first one scheduled. It'll be free and open to the public. Big thank you again to everybody for Veterans Day. Andrew was down here cooking for, in eleven hours, so a huge thank you for all that. Everybody was coming back for the brisket and all that, so, uh, thank you. There's one more thing.
You have an income and expense report in two weeks' long?
Yes, yeah, we'll have that. I meant to have that tonight, but I do not have it.
It's in the packet?
How's the end of my packet? Can I go through already?
It was on order.
April through October, that one?
Um, April through October, yes.
I read that with the, oh. I apologize for that. Sorry, I got myself out of place.
Can I give you a little bit more detail? I mean, programs for nine thousand dollars leaves a lot open there. You know, like, your finance report is wonderful. We could go and, we know every item. Can they use your QuickBooks and set up another account within that?
I mean, I think this is meant to be an overview, not a detailed report, but, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we can, we can put some additional detail in there.
Being taxpayer money is used for this, I was going to request in your monthly report that would have, list the programs that were run for that month and how many participants for the program, so that we can have an idea moving forward, how these programs are working.
And they will be putting the agenda and the minutes on.
Yeah, Andrew and I talked, not specifically about that one, but we spoke about the other stuff. Having the website updated with Freedom Rec. There's the new logo that needs to go along. And then having Shrewsbury Township's website link to the MyRec or our section of the Recreation page.
I like the program and participants, that's.
And are we going to be getting a monthly report like this? What, what type of, like, in our charge report, it was, the rec was completely taken out, we kind of see, you know, what happened, there's nothing there now. Are we going to be getting something like this to show us what's coming in monthly, what's going out?
I think this was a catch-up, right? To catch you up to date, and then probably go monthly after that?
I just want to note that just right over seventy-two thousand in income came in, and fifty thousand of that was just between the grant and New Freedom and Shrewsbury Township. But the rec director took nearly sixty thousand of that just for the rec director's existence, which left just a very small amount of approximately seventeen percent, right around twelve thousand, to run everything. And I'm just putting my concern out there that I know each year this grant is going down. It's just concerning. And I know it's six months, it's getting going, and hopefully great things will happen, but it's concerning.
You get the nail on the head, I mean, this is a startup operation, so you don't expect it to. So far, everything is really seeming to be working very well.
I would, I did attend the meeting, and the pickleball seems to be very disgruntled in their hours and cutbacks and cancellations, and that's, they brought in in those six months, seven thousand dollars. I mean, that is a very good program for them to run. And it was a bit concerning to see how upset many of them were. And, you know, if that gets cut back, that's going to be the most money.
Well, are we, are you proposing that they have unlimited use of the community center?
Well, for two years, they had the same hours every week.
I don't, that, where are the council? Where, this is a council meeting for the elected officials. I don't think having them come in at six AM is the answer, you know? I don't know what the answer is.
This, this needs to be really taken back to the rec meeting and discussed at the rec meeting.
Why not talk, talking to the facilitator, who, liaison for the rec? My concerns as a council member, that he could take back. I'm concerned about pickleball being cut back, and I think, hopefully, they're going to come to a good agreement with the pickleball people, because it is a very lucrative program. Well, they brought in seven thousand, your whole programs brought in nine, you know, so they brought in nearly as much as all the other programs for those six months, just that one right alone.
Okay.
Somebody's going to get up and play at six o'clock in the morning, I can tell you that.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, obviously, there needs to be a reasonable sharing, and I think that, you know, there's going to be a back and forth, and though, I'm sure they'll come to some reasonable accommodation, so let's just wait and see how, how it comes out on the other side. This, again, this is a startup, this is the first few months of this, this organization running. You have to at least give it a chance.
Ryan, do you need names for the cornhole? You know, public professional cornhole organizers?
Organizers or? Yeah, you can, yeah, send me an email with them, put them together, and I'll get in touch with them. Thank you.
Yeah, we had a guy that wanted to do cornhole, too, but he didn't want to go through the rec.
Yeah, he.
He wanted to fall under rec, but yet he didn't.
Yeah, he was more looking to run it as a business than rec, and I don't think that was the right kind of fit. I think, like I said earlier, I think of a model more like pickleball, where, you know, somebody's, somebody's fee is essentially being waived for the, for the day, or the week, month, whatever. I think there's a better model, but that's something that we can discuss with Frank.
Okay, we were going to discuss continuation of specific committees. So I will open that up for discussion. Business development, we don't ever seem to have a report on it, but I think that's what's going on with the Trail Towns. And so we do have people going to the Trail Town meeting, and so I think that's an important, that's still an important issue to be, to go. EMS and fire funding has kind of run its course. I think we've gotten to where.
Do you really think? You and I have been pretty much.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's calmed out, I guess, is the way to say, the way to say it. You know, we've, we've gotten the chase truck, that's been implemented. We have the EMS funding in place, the fire funding is in place, but it needs monitored, and, you know, I'm sure.
That's the big thing.
Quarterly needs to.
It needs to be monitored, because we've got other municipalities that need to be bad.
Yeah, and there's still, there's still some municipalities that really aren't on board yet, so. Actually, there might be a call for having a quarterly EMS and fire funding meeting, too, I think.
Good idea.
Talk to Todd about that.
Good idea.
So that's important. Health and safety was set up when we ran into the, the problem on Juanita Street and some other things where we wanted to make sure that somebody had somewhere to go with health and safety issues. It's not really an ongoing committee? Strike it?
No, I was just looking out to see what was, during the beginning, if that could change to.
Yeah. Infrastructure, I think, is important. We have, under infrastructure, we basically have water, roads, and the waste treatment, wastewater treatment plant. We haven't had a meeting in a while, but, you know, I, I think it's important to have the committee in place, so that if, oh, there's an issue, that we can handle it promptly. Personnel, we haven't had, had any personnel issues, per se. We've gotten through some new documentations, some new personnel manuals, we've gotten, you know, taking care of that kind of stuff, but you have to have a personnel committee. I'm not sure that public safety isn't something that is combined with health and safety, so that could just be one committee.
I'm just a little confused. I thought, the, the committees aren't necessarily going away, it's just they don't need to be on the agenda. If you're going to have a quarterly meeting for EMS, then you can just be put on the agenda when you're going to have a report.
Yeah, I mean, they're only there as a placeholder and a reminder. I mean, so that we know that they're there and that we need to, we need to discuss. I think that combining health and safety and public safety, that, that's something that could be done, just to eliminate a committee.
So, are any coming off so far?
No. I don't, I don't see a reason to. Rental housing and occupancy ordinance, Erica pointed out, some of our other ordinances, that we already had things in place. And same thing with rental housing and occupancy. I mean, we already have an ordinance in place for rental properties, and we already have a ton of federal and state, county guidelines that, that landlords have to follow. So I'm not sure, Kim, are you going to?
I, I would like to have one more meeting with that committee and go over a final ordinance proposal, because there are a lot of things that are not included in our ordinances. You know, whether the county or whether the state has this or that, we can still have our own, and I think what we need to do is make sure that it's being taken care of. I mean, even up to this point, we don't know who's got rental properties and who doesn't. We don't have registrations, and I think that's going to be a big part of the rental housing and occupancy ordinance that we need to, that we need to have. That really goes along with health, welfare, and safety of residents and lesors, lessees.
All right.
You know, to take care of. I, I would like to have one more. I, I unfortunately, due to some health problems, I wasn't able to get all of it typed up, but I pulled everything together last week, you know?
Okay, fair enough. We'll make another one. Community center cleaning, I think the issue kind of is resolved at this point, with the cleaning that we have done now. Do we need, we talk about it each month, or we can just take it off and bring it up if it becomes an issue again?
Each organization that hire there that leases out the community center, they still get, along with their lease agreement, they sign an agreement as to what they're going to do with trash, garbage, no glitter, none of this other stuff, right? They just choose to ignore it?
The directions are part of the registration process. They have to acknowledge each one.
I thought it was.
They receive a invoice with the regulations. They receive a permit with the regulations. So they have three touches on what's required to get the full deposit.
And anybody that's a five oh one C three is getting half rate?
Half rate, but full deposit.
But full deposit, okay. And we had said at one point, I don't know if it's happening, even if you get it free, you pay the security deposit?
Yes.
Okay.
You still have to go through the registration and still put the deposit.
I just wanted to make sure, because some people get real. There was a problem with the health fair, and, you know, you and I went over it earlier today, why do they have to knock down all the pickleball nets when they can stick them back against the back wall? Because somebody doesn't like.
That doesn't have anything to do with paying the deposit, but.
No, but I think people need to know that they're not in charge of the whole community center when they rent it out. And I think we also need to go back to a, a state where we said, certain organizations get X amount of free uses of the community center. We've completely gotten away from that. I agree if we have community events, but we're getting some people, I, I think that are taking advantage of it, that could do maybe one of the events here, one in Shrewsbury, one in. one in Shrewsbury, one in Stewartstown, not always at New Freedom.
It was established how many free ones at the Lions Club had, three a year.
They've had six.
Who's went away from that?
They've had six so far this year.
Well, I think...
I think seven.
I think the thing, yeah, but you're including in that, you know...
And I'm a liar, and I'm not going to, you know...
Including blood bank and blood drives and, you know, things that benefit the community and benefit even outside of the community. So, I mean, we could definitely talk about it, but personal opinion.
You know, it starts out, it was one a year. And then now we've got one a quarter. You know, that's, so have one over in Shrewsbury, the second one. Have another one over in Stewartstown. Make it a community or municipal-wide event. I'm sure they could open up over at the new building at Shrewsbury Township and have one.
Yeah, I agree.
People don't... I'm not going to be into it.
All right, I'm striking the community center cleaning. We'll do it as needed. And I'm combining health and safety and public safety under one title of public safety.
Under that, public health and safety, there you go.
Public health and safety, yeah. There's any correspondence? Public comment?
Hello, folks, Michael Worden. At Little Meadow Street. Just two quick things. So I have not done too much research in it yet for here. But my thought was, we had some crime issues over the last few years. Notice an uptick in veteran vehicles. About 25 years ago in Downey, California, I orchestrated a neighborhood watch for a community that I was, an apartment complex I was managing for my stepmother. And that neighborhood watch took off really well and really shut down some of the crime. We put up a few cameras, extra lighting and such. But I had thought about it in the prior election, about creating a neighborhood watch. So before I even put out the effort and do the research behind it, is that something that is, A, I feel is needed and B, feasible? Is there any legalities behind that? Is there anything that we need to do research on? Maybe Andrew would know in terms of borough management issues. If it's okay, what I'd like to do is get into discussions with the chief of police and so forth about creating a neighborhood watch. So what the neighborhood watch does is it helps neighbors learn to ask questions about things they see that perhaps they might just blow off. You see a vehicle parked with somebody in it. Sometimes you'll see on the various Facebook pages, hey, I see a guy walking around knocking on doors. These are the kinds of things that I'd like to educate the New Freedom community and not to be paranoid, but to be alert and to be prepared. And along with that, when I had done this in Downey, California, we had safe houses. And what safe houses were, it was a special sticker that you put on your door or window somewhere near your front entrance that tells children if they have a reason to be scared, if there's a vehicle following them, if there's a stranger following them, bullies picking on them, that that house is a safe place for them to go to. So that obviously the owners would have to be vetted, go through the background check. And that they could actually come in and scream for help and that they'd have a place to go to. So these are just thoughts that, you know, I had. If it's feasible, I'd like to take the lead on that and then come back to you with reports as to how this can be accomplished, you know, what it would entail.
Can I invite you to the next police commission meeting?
Yeah, that'd be great. Maybe I could mention it with them. They might know a little bit more out here in terms of how feasible this is. But I'd really like to get that going because it would only, it would not only educate folks, but it might inspire some other changes that people might not have brought up to this point, street lighting, whatever, you know, I think that could help. And the second thing, I don't know if it's been talked about, but it probably has the painting of lines in New Freedom.
Or the...
So is this a thing that's been, is this a thing? So I drove, obviously, the yellow paints all over the place. But there's actually white paint too that is scattered, right? In front of the, what is that, smoke shop thingy there? The, I call it like a convenient shop. I think it's...
Stop the chill, stop the chill.
Yes, so in front of there, there's, I think, a white line. And it is so dissipated that it almost looks like a cloud. And the first thing I thought of, because my mind thinks about such nonsense, is what the legality would be if there's an accident right there. Because then somebody could come back to the front row and say, well, you didn't paint the line right, you know? And so I'm trying to prevent any future headaches by getting these lines done correctly. And I don't know what they can do to the blacktop area outside of those lines.
That's a PennDOT road. We don't really have control over...
Any of those things? Is there something...
They did a lousy job when they did that. Can you notice?
It's horrible. It's tracked all over, you know? And it affects the community's look. I mean, it looks trashy, you know, it really does. Not only is it, I don't want to say it's a huge safety issue, but you never know. It'll give somebody an out if there's an issue at that precise location. They'll take pictures of the lines.
Unfortunately, no, that's a PennDOT problem. It's not a New Freedom borough. Although we certainly could contact PennDOT.
Yeah, they need to do it over because...
That was a third contractor that PennDOT had hired. So they've got to hear through their process to get it.
Okay, they need to come and fix it because it's making the community look trashy, right? And when people are driving, they don't think PennDOT. They think New Freedom, see those lines? They just do. You know, and again, safety. And to maybe put cones when they paint the lines, put a cone at the beginning of that line and at the end. So drivers, you know, can see it. That's my thought, so thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
So would you like to speak at the police commission meeting?
Sure.
Be the first Wednesday of December, 7:00 p.m., this room.
First Wednesday, okay. 7:00 p.m.
Mike.
Yes, ma'am, thanks, Erica.
Anything else? Question, do we need a short executive session so that I can find out what I'm doing here?
Well, there's no, there's no borough impact of any of this. So we can go over if you want to, but there's no legal responsibility for it by borough. So I can review that if you want.
So you could give us both the copies?
Yeah, then I can give you guys your copies.
And I want to know.
Give you a summary of what it is.
Well, I'm sure, I would guess, if it were me, if I were on council, I would like to know what's going on. So, I mean, I would encourage a short executive session.
Very good.
So we're not going to come back and do anything. So you can feel free.
Could adjourn into executive session.
Yeah, we're going to adjourn into executive session. And, Ryan, can you give me a ride home if I, because I don't think...
It's okay.
You're okay? You sure? Because I don't, you don't really need to...
I'll take her home.
Yeah, I'm already tired. Okay. And we're adjourning into executive session. We will not repeat.
No pens, no paper.
We can just stay here, right? Yeah, we'll just stay here.
Well, if they're leaving, why don't we take a real quick...
Sure.
That's right.
Could turn off the...
Oh, come on, you know, fine.
Turn off the... Turn off the...